Okay, welcome everyone. I'd like to call to order the first meeting tonight is Lawrenceburg Board of Works for April 7th, 2025. If I get a roll call.
Board member Tommy Rowlett.
Present.
Board member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
Attorney General Del Wilton.
Here.
President Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, I have no announcements for this particular meeting, fellows, unless you do.
I have none, Mayor.
Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry. We got some new business tonight. Ms. Felix, you got a couple? Labor apprentice recommendations.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm here tonight to make two recommendations. There's currently two openings for the labor apprentice position. So on behalf of myself and the remainder of the hiring committee, I'd like to recommend two of the candidates, which we had, we had 159 applicants this time. But I'd like to recommend Matthew Bauer and Stephen Salter for those two positions.
Okay, a couple questions I have. Number one, how many, how many total applicants did you have for this position?
Hundred and fifty-nine.
Hundred and fifty-nine. Well, then I'm sure we got two of the best.
Oh, yes, for sure.
You guys got any questions?
No.
If not, I'd like to take these one at a time, like we normally do. So the first motion I'd like to take is for, to approve Matthew Bauer as a labor apprentice.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second motion I'd like to make is on Mr. Stephen Salter as a labor apprentice for the city of Lawrenceburg. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
All second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Firefighter, paramedic posting.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We do have a new opening in the fire department, excuse me. So I was here tonight to request the board's approval to post the firefighter, paramedic bid. And if no one signs it internally, they then take it outside.
Okay, questions?
I have none, Mayor.
None, Brett? If not, I entertain a motion to allow Ms. Felix to post firefighter, paramedic posting internally first, and then as CBA requires, and then we will go external if there's no qualified candidates.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny, what's the start dates for the labor?
Oh, yes, April 22nd. They're both starting on that date. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Tremaine, ambulance billing resolution.
Yeah, ambulance billing group that does our billing for us approached this and said, told us that the rates, the billing rates hadn't been raised in a while. So that's when we started putting together, they, we took their recommendations. She sent them down, and then actually I'd talked to Mayor a while back about it, but then come to find out, there was an actual resolution written in 2015 that I didn't know about. So what had happened was we got with Diane and Dell and updated the resolution.
Okay.
So those charges that are on there are the industry standard, I guess you'd say. But one thing is added to that is with the soft billing we do, we have an aging report, which is the balance that the insurance doesn't cover. That's the soft billing part. They can either pay it or they don't. And we just, they just, we needed to put in a resolution that after a year, if that hasn't been paid, then it just drops from the aging report. So that's, that's the only other thing we added in there was to be able to drop those from the aging report.
Okay. All right. Questions, guys?
No, sir.
Tommy?
I have none, Mayor.
This resolution number?
Two.
Two?
Two.
Okay, so I entertain a motion then to approve resolution number two dash 2025.
So moved.
Second?
All second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Johnny? I have no other new business nor any old business for Board of Works tonight unless you guys have anything you need brought up.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay, if not, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
See ya.
All right. With that, I'd like to call to order the City of Lawrenceburg Utility Board meeting for April 7th, 2025 with another roll call. Mr. Petty?
Board member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board member Tommy Rowlett.
Present.
Board member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we got board member Dylan Little absent. We got city attorney Del Wilton.
Here.
President Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay. I don't have any announcements for utility board meeting tonight, guys, unless any of you do. I would entertain a motion then to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mayor, I would make that motion, providing that we change the first sentence in the paragraph of the utility service board meetings.
Okay.
It is quoted in here that it's the City of Lawrenceburg Parks Board meeting.
Oh.
So if we could change that.
I will make that note and make sure it's changed.
Yeah, it does. Okay. All right. Thanks, Tommy. So I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting with the said change.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have a March 17th work session. I'd like to get minutes approved.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
All right, second?
Second.
Second, Brett? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We got some new business. Ms. Felix, you're on the bubble again.
Thank you. I'm here to request the board's approval to, for me to advertise for the utility director position again. We've had this position that, that was vacated back in September. We did try to recruit January, December-ish. We'd like to go ahead and do that again with the board's approval.
Are we using the same language that we had the last time? Has anything changed on that?
No, nothing's changed in the job description.
I'll make that motion.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion, Tom?
Make a motion.
All second motion.
Second. Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Did you, did you vote?
I didn't hear him say anything.
What'd you say?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I need a roll call.
Yeah. Board member Tony Abbott.
Aye.
Board member Tommy Rowlett.
Aye.
Board member Lenny Fryman.
Aye.
And board member Brett Bondurant.
No.
Okay, the motion will carry, it was a three to one. Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other new business or old business for utility board that you guys want to bring up? If not, I entertain a motion to review the claims and pay the claims upon board approval. Re-prove.
Approved.
Approved.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
What do you want me to say?
Aye or nay?
I did say aye.
Okay.
Scoot over closer to him, Lenny.
He needs hearing aid. He needs hearing aid, Tony.
I hear, I hear Mark and Brett is fine. All right, how about a motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified?
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
Second?
Let me, I got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, motion carries. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
I said aye. What you want, you better turn your hearing aid off.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I was trying to give you a chance there, Lenny.
I know. I know. Cause he was watching. That's the only reason I did that.
All right, I'd like to bring to order the Lawrenceburg City Council meeting for April 7th, 2025. You all could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I get another roll call, Mr. Petty?
All right, we got councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Uh, we got councilperson Dylan Little absent. We got councilperson Tommy Rowlett.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here. Here.
I don't know what's gotten into him.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
You're scared.
City attorney Del Wilton.
Here.
Uh, Mayor Kelly Milan.
Here. Scott, did you hear Dell? Can you hear him out there? You're in the back.
No.
See?
Don't you start, Scott.
I mean, you called Lenny Dell, and I'm gonna take that as a compliment.
There you go. There you go.
Well, I'm really, maybe it is me. Maybe it is me. Announcements, board reports, streets, alleys, and curbs, downtown area, Mr. Abbott.
Everything's good.
Streets, alleys, and curbs, Little Hill area, Mr. Fryman.
Real good, thank you.
Finance department, Mr. Bondurant.
No report, sir.
Fire department, Mr. Rowlett.
No report, Mayor.
Anybody got anything to add for parks?
Flooded.
Flooded.
Yes.
No.
Yep. Flooded. We're all flooded. Airways flooded.
We're, we're not really that flooded.
Yeah.
Mayor, is?
But they're wet and puddled.
There is one thing I should have brought up under, I guess would have been in streets, alleys, and curbs.
Yes.
I'm noticing a lot of those advertisement signs throughout our city, like at the bottom of the 4850. We're getting really saturated. Yep. Could we have our code coordinator look into maybe seeing if them are put in place legally or not?
Does this include all the realtor signs with directions towards the house that's for sale, that's going up in the district everywhere on the right ways of the city?
Nothing should be in the right way.
There's all kinds of, oh, there's two realtors doing it that I know of.
And the sign.
They're putting up a lot of.
I will, I'll get Mr. Johnson and Mr.
If you would, please. Yeah.
Take a look.
They need, they really ought to take a ride around the entire city. I've seen them on Tanner Lane. I've seen them at the bottom 4850. There's actually one up here at the corner of Walnut and High, right in the middle. I'm like, they just look like, seems like we're getting oversaturated with them, cause like if one puts them out, the next one puts them out. So if you can look at that, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Got it. I'll check with them in the morning.
And then it looks like sometimes, when they do whatever to get done, they're leaving them there too.
Yeah.
They're picking them up.
All right, good, 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 good. Okay. I've got a couple of announcements. I've talked with all of our department heads while I was talking to them all throughout the weekend and things, but I reached out to Mayor Schwing last Friday and offered up any folks that we, we had or equipment. He said they were pretty, pretty well taken care of. Obviously, they, they got flooded like they, they normally do, but I think they were ahead of it, so to speak, according to Mayor Schwing. So they'll have some cleanup coming up here in the next week or so after it recedes. We were pretty fortunate.
Yes, we were.
We, we're very fortunate, actually. I can't imagine going through that every year and things like that. But a lot of other folks around our area having to deal with that. I heard they did open the 350 bridge this afternoon.
Yes, it's open.
So that's a help to a lot of people going that direction, but.
They still closed off going down, what is that, 56 going to Rising Sun?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that, that'd probably be closed.
Is it supposed to crest today? Is that, did I read that correctly?
Yeah, I think so, and start receding tomorrow.
Okay.
Is what I'm hearing. So I hope it recedes as quick as it comes up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, just wanted to remind everybody, the community picnic is on the 19th of April, which is two weeks from, wait, a week from this Saturday coming up. So, so don't forget about that. And then you can see the pavilion's got a lot of activity. Actually, you know, last week with all the rain, nobody was able to do anything, but they were back at it again today. So they'll keep moving forward on it. So anybody else got any announcements they want to bring forward? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mayor, I'll make that motion as well, but also that has the Lawrenceburg Parks Board as well.
Oh, we were thinking about parks when we did that meeting, I guess.
I just really, that way we're not, those minutes are not getting put in with the parks and the county council, USB.
Good catch. Good catch.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay, with that said change?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Tommy, second?
Second.
Second, Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, Dell, I'd like, I think we were gonna table this for tonight.
Yes, please. Yeah, give us a chance to talk to them some more.
Yeah. So any questions regarding that? I'd like to entertain a motion to table the encompass property ordinance.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have no other new or old business for this particular meeting. Anybody got anything they want to bring up? If not, I entertain comments from the audience. Yes, ma'am?
Were there no applicants for the utility director position?
No, we're, we're asked permission to post it.
I thought you, someone said you posted it back?
Oh, back in September.
Were there no applicants?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we had plenty of applicants. We, the committee, the, the committee narrowed it down to, we had five interviews, but it just wasn't the right person.
Didn't several back out prior to your interview?
Yeah, we did, two of them. I think we ended up like.
Yeah, took other jobs or something. Yeah, you're right, Tom.
Yeah.
I'm surprised they don't all want to come work for us.
Yeah, well, it's probably me. I don't know.
And then I just wanted. And I also just wanted to comment that during spring break, I took my grandson to the Arch Street Park, and everything was beautiful and nice and in working condition.
Thank you.
So appreciate the city for that. And while we were out and about that day, I noticed the side of the row house by the civic park that looks really great, too.
It does look great.
Well, I tell you what.
I agree.
I, I'll be first to say it. When they first started doing that brick and they got about a quarter of it done, I'm thinking, oh, man, I don't know if I'm gonna like this. Man, I'll tell you what, it, it's grown on me. And then they'll, they'll have a couple of balconies that will, I, I think it'll be a pretty nice piece of property when they get done with it.
Are they gonna, are they gonna paint it all the same color, I hope?
I think they're gonna do some different things to the front and the, and the side, yeah. Or the back, yeah.
We're moving the face, too. We just got the title work done, so we're, we're moving to the next step as we speak. We just got late last week to go through the title work. Got a confirmation from the underwriters, so that project's moving.
Same, the same with the restaurant, obviously the pavilion, but the restaurant over there is moving.
Yeah, it's rocking to it now.
Yeah.
So a lot of good things.
Yep.
It's exciting, actually.
And we took a little drive down West High Street. There's two new houses down there that look great.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
The house looking good.
Well, they.
Thank you for noticing.
It's all these guys.
I did.
These guys up here, they're doing a great job, that's for sure.
It's a team effort.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Yes.
It's a team effort, Mayor. You're a part of this team.
Yeah. We appreciate the compliment.
I got a good question. Just, I just want to know, just, just for the public's knowledge, any update on the riverfront?
Uh-uh.
I was bringing that up in upcoming here.
No.
No?
We are, we're working on it. We're moving. We're, we're talking to.
Well, the only reason I'm saying that is I, I kind of read the minutes for the last Conservancy District meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the one in February, and they pretty much said that they're, they ceased all funding towards their engineering and not gonna, and I was just kind of, like I said, we've had that sign up for two years, and just to keep the public.
And what we're.
A little bit informed.
Yeah, that's a good question.
You know what I'm saying? Just, I mean, I know that we don't have the answers.
Well, you're right.
But it's, at least with that sign there, just to kind of hear and there, just kind of say, hey, we're working on it still. Hey.
I'm bringing this up during claims. We're gonna discuss that during claims.
What?
Well, I want to get to the claims.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but to answer your question, Mark, we're, we've got a meeting on Thursday to talk to some folks about it.
Yeah, I don't need the detail. Just say, we're still working on it.
And, and after we get all of the options available to us, we were gonna meet with the council and, and discuss the options.
Okay. Yeah, that's just something.
And then, it'll be up to council to decide which direction they want to go.
Okay.
So, but yeah, that's a good question. I mean, it's, nobody's trying to push anybody.
Well, I've.
We're all in favor of this project.
Well, trust me, there's a lot of people asking, you know, they see the signs and different things, and it's like, well, they might, you know, just, just to keep them in the public and being transparent, just, just an update. And it don't have to be great detail, just, just kind of say, hey, we're, we're still working on it, just not there yet.
Absolutely. We are, we are. It's, 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 it's not off our radar, that's for sure.
Okay.
We've got too much invested in it already, to be honest with you.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, 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 trust me. I mean, there's.
Well, and, and, and we got a meeting Wednesday. We're discussing the initial GMP, because we're moving forward. And once that's discussed and they make their, their changes, then we'll bring it to council. They'll come and roll it out to council, so council can ask their questions, because they gotta be the ones to approve it.
Good. Yeah, I just, just a quick update, that's it.
Then we'll have a better idea of heading towards funding. But, yeah, we, that's, I think it's a great question. I think, I'm glad you asked it. Yeah. Okay, anything else? That's good. Anything? Any other comments? If not, I entertain a, entertain a motion to review and discuss the claims.
That's what I like. I got a couple of questions.
Yep.
On page 16.
Okay.
1105, 1106. This riverfront project's moving along like a sloth.
Like a what?
Like a sloth.
Yeah.
You know, slow moving. Like an extinct sloth. Um, I've spoke with the LCD board, and I've, for a long time, wanted all the engineers right here in front of us.
Uh-huh.
Their engineers and our engineers, because our engineers are saying one thing, their engineers are saying another. So I'd like to get them together and see what they say. And they're looking at each other. So we can get this project going. Here, we're getting billed out another $100,000 for engineering. I don't know what's been done that we need to pay them $100,000 for.
Been quite a bit done.
Well, all I'm, all I'm hearing is the LCD sent our engineers questions. Our engineers said they answered them. Their engineers, the LCD, said they did not answer them.
Can you?
And that was, I was told that today.
And that, and that's not true. So I mean, for, for, we, there's a lot to be said, I guess, about this, and we're trying, you know, we're working through the process.
But why can't we get these engineers together? Because one of them's not gonna say that when the other one is standing in front of them. And we can find out where all this bull is gonna stop at.
Let me interrupt just a second, okay? We had them all in the same room here, if you remember, right? And none, not a one of them said anything derogatory toward, towards what? Cause I asked the question, if you remember. Now, just hear me out, real quick. I asked the question to that engineering group that they had. I said, hey, okay, my understanding was that we had four questions that they were needing to answer, our folks, our engineers were needed to answer at that point. We, they were waiting our, our folks to answer these four questions. I said, once we answer those four questions, can you tell me that there won't be additional questions? Because we've been doing this for 18 months.
Yep.
And it's cost us an extra hundreds of thousands of dollars of, I think, unnecessary. Okay? And I know this is public, and I don't, I don't, I'd say.
Public's fine.
But anyway, so what, that's part of, Thursday, we got a meeting to discuss, and we're gonna bring the options back to you guys and how you want to handle this going forward.
Well, um.
I just want to.
Our best option, though, is to have LCD support this project. We need them on board with us. And I want them sitting right there, so I can look right at the one who told me, you guys are not answering our questions. I want him to say that right here in a meeting with our group here to say, yes, we did answer your questions. Or what questions do you have that we can answer today to get this project going? Because, like I said, it's been a year and a half. And it's the same thing. Questions, didn't answer them. We answered them. No, we didn't answer them. That's all we're getting for a year and a half now. And it's not gonna get better till we get them in front of us.
Okay.
So I like, and they said they would have their engineers here.
We can do that, too. Yeah.
You know, the last.
That up, I greatly appreciate it.
The last thing that I got from them is, it's in our ballpark.
Okay.
And I'm thinking, well, what is in our ballpark? Paperwork or something that needs
to be done? And then we hear a bunch of other discouraging stuff, so you don't know what's right and what's wrong here.
Yeah, I mean.
You know what I've told you?
I know exactly what you told me.
And do you believe me?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yes, I do.
Well.
I never did doubt you.
It's not the point of believing in anybody or not believing in anybody. The point is getting them together and making, getting it ironed out and get it moving.
I think we.
We got to, sometimes you just gotta look past some things and say, guys, we're in this together. This is for the city of Lawrenceburg. I've got citizens out there asking me, when's this project gonna get done? Because they're watching, and nothing is getting done at all. They're saying, it's coming soon. And they said, well, it's a joke. How soon is soon, Tony? Well, it's a year and a half ago, and we ain't done a darn thing. And now they want $100,000, and I don't even know what that's for.
Well, I can tell you that the project is, is ready.
No, the only ones making money off this project right now are engineers on both sides. No, the only ones making money off this project right now are engineers on both sides.
Um, we were ready to move with our original plans a year and a half ago. If they would have approved them and given us the permit a year and a half ago, we would have already been under construction.
But that's when we get into this questions and questions.
Right, and, and, and the LCD's engineers keep asking our engineers to redesign the project, and all I can say is that every time they've asked us to do that, we've done it. Every time they've asked us questions, we've answered them right away, and we'll, we'll keep doing that. I mean, at some point, hopefully-
So if we've done that, why, I mean, I'm not saying we haven't.
Yeah.
But if we've done that, why are they saying we haven't done it for a year and a half?
Question, Tony.
So that's why we need them here in front of us.
That's a good question. Very good question. Absolutely.
Because I'm, I'm just tired of it, guys.
I am, too.
Yeah.
Especially spending out money for engineering for, I don't know what they've engineered.
Well, I think you said it best. It's not about us or the LCD. It's about everyone in the city.
And if, and hopefully everyone can remember that and we can figure this out.
This is a great project for the city. I mean, this is, this is really nice for the city.
I appreciate, I, I, I agree.
I, I think a little bit of what Tony's trying to say, though, is if we were ready to rock at our previous, you know, we passed many other claims, what, what is this claim for? What's changed in that?
Because they've asked us to re-engineer things, all, all the way, that's why, where I'm going with, it's cost us more and more money.
Yeah.
They don't do that stuff for free.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So is this, is this a hundred thousand, is this for that reason?
Yes.
Strictly just for engineering questions?
Listen, the one that you're-
Talking about.
The one he's questioning, and I looked at the claims.
Yep.
I went over, looked at them. The one you're questioning is the barge restaurants. That's the engineering for the barge restaurants.
Yeah.
And then the other ones from Moffett, I can't remember exactly what their monies were for, but I did look at both those claims, and that, they are legit, but the other one's the barge restaurants from structure point.
And, and that is the-
But if we don't get anything done, we don't need no barge restaurants.
I get what you're saying. I think we all hear that.
But, but the, the whole idea was, as they were asking us more and more questions, we thought it was best to keep the project going. So in case, as soon as they okay it, 'cause I, I talked, I, I, we'll get into this now. I talked to the Army Corps myself. I called them myself, okay? Uh, the LCD doesn't like that when I do that.
Nope.
Okay, but I needed to hear from them, okay? So I, I asked them, I had the, the four oh eight permitting guy on the phone, and the gentleman that represents, uh, uh, the Army Corps for this area, okay? They were both on the phone. They're very familiar with the project, and I, and I asked them, I said, is there any way that we can get this project, the four oh eight, the only way you can get an approved project with the Army Corps of Engineers, you gotta have what they call four oh eight, uh, approved, approved four oh eight application permitting. And then you can start ordering your materials, okay? 'Cause that means it's a great project, time to move forward, okay? So I asked them, I said, is there any way to get this four oh eight without a, uh, a letter of no, without a letter of no objection, which is what we're waiting on from the LCD? And they said, no. I said, okay. I said, my second question was, as soon as the LCD gives you the letter of no objection on this project, how soon can you have our plans approved? They said, Mayor, we've, we've looked at your plans two and three times. It's, we, we feel real comfortable getting approved right away. We did, we did something that we, that, that we've done since we've, uh, taken office here with that, dealing with that levy, any project, same with the Flaherty and Collins. From the very beginning of the project, I had our engineering companies make sure that the LCD was involved in the, in the phone calls as well as the Army Corps. So that's why the Army Corps made the comment, hey, we've, we've, we've looked at your plans two and three times. They're ready. It's, we, we can't, we can't seem to satisfy Mr. Mundell and Associates.
Then I'd say us citizens of Lawrenceburg that wants this project done, call your LCD board members.
Well, what Mark-
Until then, I want a meeting with them. I want us all to get together.
What Mark said is also discouraging, 'cause what Mark's saying is that their last meeting, I guess, they said they're not even gonna look at our plans anymore, and what they want is us to pay for their engineers, which we've never done, and we're, I don't know if that isn't an appropriate thing to ask us for, but they've said if we don't give them seventy, eighty thousand dollars, they're not even gonna do their job, which part of their job is to give.
Part of their motto is to create parks and recreation along the levy. That's a part of the motto of the Lawrenceburg Conservancy-
But we're not asking them for-
I know, we haven't asked them for nothing, but I, we just, I just want to work together. I just want to work together.
We thought we were doing that.
Yeah.
Well, let's try and get them over here again.
Okay. Will do.
But I think it's important to just answer your question. We've done everything they've ever asked us to do and done it immediately. So if they say anything different, then that's wrong. They're not telling you the truth. Other than that, like the mayor said, part of their job is to give letters of no objection to review plans. They've done it a million times. We've done a bunch, we've done projects on the levy before, just this one, it's eighteen months now, and they won't, they won't approve it.
Well, let's get something moving. Let's get them, let's get them together, maybe we can work this out.
Good idea.
I, I hope so. I want to. Everybody wants to.
I think everybody does, yes, Mayor.
Okay, well-